Go ahead and get started, thank you. Quick could I have a little call please?
Angie Wolf.
Here.
Barb Scotts.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
Here.
Mary Beth Schall.
Here.
James Cartman.
Here.
Cindy Bytton.
Here. Thank you all, if we do approve a posting, please join us for the fidget board.
Fidget board. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal in his law, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, we do have proof of posting, I already said that, but that's okay. We're extra proofed. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
We missed your.
We did miss you. There were some corrections. Hearing that, James?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Public input, I do know we have a few.
I'll grab it.
You don't need to type it down there.
Yes, please. So as I do walk back, I welcome everybody to our board, I love having people here at board meeting. Get lonely here sometimes. But we do just ask that, you know, the floor is yours, please limit your comments to two minutes, we will have a timer, James will let you know when you have approached your time. We will, you know, certainly please share your thoughts, we aren't able to, you know, comment on them, but we will certainly listen to everything that you have. So our first one is Natasha Frost.
Okay, so I've never been to a board meeting before, I didn't know how this was gonna work, and I thought maybe I wouldn't have to say anything, so I'm gonna try and be really fast, so I am a parent of two teenagers in this school district who have been through school since pre-K. I live in a house seven miles from where I grew up, so I did grow up in Wisconsin Heights, but I went to a super tiny school, Springfield-Martinsville, if they even remember that exists, it's no longer around. And I, I am a professor in the School of Medicine and Public Health at UW, I am a physician, and I graduated from medical school over twenty years ago, and I brought my kids to live here in Heights because there are a lot of things about here that I value. I think for everyone, this has been a terrible year, and I know you guys have really difficult decisions to make as a board, and they're decisions that I don't know if, like, it's really fair to place those on a school board, but we are where we are in COVID, and I'm hoping that the school board can first consider the, a couple things, I know I'm gonna run out of time, but one is that when you say making a mask is a choice, you're really only making the choice for yourself, so you are also making the choice for the other person who's unmasked, meaning whether that kid needs to stay home and be quarantined, or you put that other child's, child at risk and their family at risk. And there are a lot of things that we don't see about people's families that are invisible that may make them at high risk for more serious infection. Two, the game has changed, so it's really unfortunate, but like, now is not what it was in June, if we had had this conversation in June, I would not have said the same thing, probably, but we're in a different place, and more kids are getting sick with COVID, whether you like that or not, or believe that or not, it seems to be what's happening, and more of those kids are gonna be in our school district. It's just a matter of time. Okay, so I hope you follow the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, and everybody else who says, at least if the school started this school year until we know what happens, we should go back masked, and then if things get better, great, let's go back to being unmasked, because that's what we all want, I've been wearing this every day for seventeen months for twelve to fourteen hours a day, I don't wanna wear it anymore either, but it's the right thing to do for this moment in life.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was like two minutes and thirty seconds. I fell asleep for a summary statement.
Our next is Andrew Dussler.
Hello, I will just be much more succinct in that I was here to support following the recommendations from the CDC, and that, you know, we have the same amount of cases per day that we had in the spring, and those cases are going down and we require a mask, and right now the cases are going up, and it really logically makes sense to ask the kids to wear a mask, and until we know that it can be safe.
All right, thank you. And then Hillary, after.
I don't have a lot of extras to add, so actually I've kind of summed everything. But I am also here to advocate mask-wearing. You know, at the minimum, the elementary level ages twelve and under, but I also advocate for the ages of twelve and up through our seniors, mostly due to the fact that, like what Tasha said, you, even if they are vaccinated, older children, we have unvaccinated children that it's harder to protect, and if we're half wearing masks and then, you know, half of us are wearing, half of us aren't, the level of safety just isn't the highest level that you could provide. I'm just here to advocate mask-wearing within the schools, and I'm assuming that you have the issue with the buses, when we start trying to separate elementary just, those stuff, and school, and sports, and then, you know, there's just other community events that I'm sure it's tough when you start trying to separate those as well.
Thank you, thank you all, thank you, appreciate that. All right, then we will move on to section three, our minutes of the year. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of July twenty-six, twenty-two-one? James and Matt? Were there any changes or comments that anybody had on those? Seeing none, James? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Barb? Angie?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Do I have a motion to approve the approvals and disbursements as presented in the board minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Angie and James, any comments on any of the entries? Not seen anything, James? Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt? Barb?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. I don't have a lot for board president, I just appreciate having the community here, hearing from the community throughout these last couple of weeks, I know it's just a challenging time for all of us. It's exciting that we're already in August, though, and we're gonna be starting, you know, sports are already starting, and we're really getting into it all over again, so just looking for an exciting year to come. Jordan, you are up with the admin team.
Can I say a quick shout-out to everybody involved in the National Night Out? It was an incredibly cool event, I gotta admit, blast, every single person was so gracious, fun, I know a lot of planning went into it, Jordan lives, picture ten out back and just left there, nope. But thanks to everybody, I know there are a lot of planning went into that, but I can get, turned out better than expected, so.
Yep, shout-out to the Sheriff's Department, they did a lot of the, like, work, just were gracious hosts, so, thank you. In terms of admin reports, I don't know if board members have any questions regarding the reports, the reports I've received from the administrators, we are still remaining committed to trying to provide these written reports, and then if you have questions or feedback that you'd like to offer, feel free, so I just opened the floor right now, if you have questions from the administrators.
Glad to see that we reached out to the WIA about eight-man football, so we can possibly get in for some championships and such, so that's exciting, considering football practice starts tomorrow, very exciting.
The hope is with some new leadership that that possibility will become more realistic than it was in the past.
Yes, there are so many more teams going to eight-man now, and it's like you have to, you have to revisit that, like, everybody should have a chance at some capacity, so that's, that's good to, good to see, hopefully it's a movement there.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll just keep moving.
Sounds great, all right. Well then, moving on to our community discussions and information, our focus point is, of course, facilities and transportation, one of our common ones here, we do have representatives from PSI here, again, to share updates. Looks like those started up in line here.
Mike, would you be so gracious, you had to please step into the center of the room. Yes, you should. We're trying to help the audio be a little bit better on our.
Wasn't very good.
Is there a hatch in the middle of that thing?
I have a panic button over the table.
Like, I got you back.
You're rejecting me or something.
Mike, that's your project manager at the Forward Services, good to see everybody again, thanks for having me. Got a similar update here on the high school, high and middle school renovations, and also the elementary school additions, so we'll just run through that. So the high and middle school renovations, with the mechanical stuff, we basically are about wrapping that up, really, and we're getting into the equipment startup phase, the test and balance phase, we do have insulation to complete some small pieces of equipment, still do a little bit of piping too and things like that, but that's kind of where we're at with a lot of mechanical stuff, like the air handling units, we should have most of those started up tomorrow, we started up the chillers today, the big chiller equipment started putting, being able to school, uh, cool, school, the air hammer, speed up for that, we got most of those put together, so that's kind of where we're at with the mechanical pieces. In the bathroom remodel, we're wrapping up plumbing fixtures and the high school wing, and the Vision 10, which is like the general specialties, like the toilet accessories and partitions and things like that through those remodeled bathrooms, and we're gonna start cleaning them and doing punch lists and things like that. Corridor, high school corridor, the bicycle ceilings, we're pretty much wrapped up with those too, we got a few small pieces of trim, and then as we finish out some of the systems, the mechanical systems, just drop some of the tile, because we've left a few open for ceiling tiles to kind of complete some of that stuff, that systematic work, once that done, we dropped those, and we've got punch lists out for that as well. VCU's, those are the vertical classroom units, that add the cooling mainly in the high school wing, that's also mechanical equipment that's basically wrapped up, we're just doing punch stuff, we're cleaning the units, we're touching, we do paint touch-ups, a few little diffusers here and there, a couple of rooms that we're putting on, onto the units, and just kind of wrapping up the details there as well. We've completed the high school ceiling painting, so we're ready for, for all those classrooms, we're ready for punch there. Kitchen hood, we have the hood up, in the kitchen, the front serving line, we also have the tile worked on in there, the FRP work, some of the veneer work done, we're basically just looking for a trim piece around the hood, bringing the equipment in next week in coordination with your food service staff, some new, new equipment as well from us in there, and then kind of wrapping that up as well. What else you got? Corridor flooring, we've gotten through the, the main entrance area, we've gotten through the section that runs through kind of the locker rooms and the gymnasiums, replacement done there, and then we've done the field tile in the middle school wing, so what we have left for this season is kind of like the back hallways that go in front of the band, like the art, kind of down that way to wrap up, as well as the border tile in the middle school, and then we'll be done with that as well, so we're planning to do that in the next couple of weeks. And then we also wrapped up just in the last week, week and a half, the kitchen, kitchen roof replacement as well, so we completed all that, so, I got some pictures, we can scroll through, here's kind of the cafeteria with the front serving line, that's the new tile veneer there, the larger openings that are gonna have those rolling grills, and there's gonna be like a hot and cold serving line, so the kids can just go through there instead of having to go into the kitchen, for a logistics situation there, which is a big benefit there, so you can see that. And then this is like the a la carte, we've got the veneer down there, the new ceilings kind of wrapped up, yeah, rolling grill will go in here just for security, but in that space, but typically we left open for the operations piece, so the kids can just go in there and get their a la carte stuff. A picture of the high school main entrance cloud ceiling, so you can see we're basically done there, very nice.
It is so bright.
Makes it a totally different.
It is, it is so.
Thanks.
Mike did it himself.
I installed everything. This is another shot down the hallway, I've kind of mentioned this before, but we replaced with drywall here, it used to be glazing or an old tackboard looking stuff, we've got brand new ceilings, and everything's kind of, we've built soft, full kids with some accent color, I didn't get that, but it was in front of the lacquer, we used to have some splashing and kind of wrapped it in there, so it's just another picture of that. And here you can see the vertical classroom units to cool some of those high schooling classrooms, this just doesn't have the diffusers on, but you can see with the painted white ceiling.
Right, not yellow.
Make it, yeah, but not yellow, everywhere with stains and everything everywhere, so a lot fresher, a lot brighter. And then this, this one was the chiller room, so you can see how much mechanical work there is, give you a taste of that, like, this is, to add the cooling to the high school wings, the two gyms, so on and so forth that we did, this is kind of what it takes, just, just for reference point, you gotta have two main circulation pumps, two chiller pumps, all the piping that goes with it, and, you know, sometimes that gets overlooked, how much, almost that really is, so that gives a good shot, this is also a new air hammer in that receiving room, that was in pretty bad shape, so that was one of the ones that got replaced, you can see that as well. Let's see here, and this one, it's also a vertical classroom shop, but this is also where we expanded two classrooms, there was a storage that took that, like, from here and then another set of windows in there, removed those walls and then just expanded the classrooms, so you just need some nice, bigger space, batch space. Then you can see the main entrance flooring.
The spot where the pallet is in the middle is where the school logo is gonna go.
Well, we're not gonna leave those there. That's pretty cool. Something goes something out of it, I don't know.
And then another shot here just gives you down the, the gym, the locker room area. And then you can see the kitchen roof, I don't know if anyone's seen the old roof up there, but this is a lot. Yeah, there was like moss growth and all that kind of stuff, that was one of your oldest roofs left, that hadn't been updated yet, so this is a lot cleaner and a lot better and a lot more watertight, for sure. And then these are the south restrooms remodel, we got the tile done in there, the new lighting, ceilings, we're just putting in plumbing fixtures last Thursday, we were gonna put those in, start putting the general specialties in, like the rat bars and all that stuff. And then we got the windows cut in here, and the, that's the econ classrooms. Yeah, and so we just have to install the windows, those are coming up Wednesday, get those in, put a stone cell, solid surface cell on the inside, that pretty much wraps up that, that classroom area, besides the fact that we painted the ceilings too in there, and this whole wall on the inside we repainted, since we had it down over the windows. On with the elementary school, so we're continuing on the main activities that we kind of have with a few, few new things sprinkled in, the building foundations, we're basically at the northeast corner now, and kind of like, some of the foundations on the inside of the building, we just afford the gym footings, the main gym footings, and kind of working our way southeast, southwest corner, out to the northeast corner with everything. Site utilities, we basically wrapped up for the season, we got everything in, the new water line, the new sewer lines that are on the south side, we got the new storm line that came across the whole north section, got, there's a couple more storm lines we did on, on kind of the west side as well, so all that's in now, kind of been regraded and ready for, generally for season two, or a few other little pieces of work we do up to season two for final grading stuff, once we get the building up, exteriors done, things like that, preparation of the sequence. And then we did start underground, so you can see here in this picture, started to put all the plumbing in throughout the buildings, sort of the southeast corner, just like we did with the foundations, we're gonna chase it around here, and we'll start with this slab upgrade work kind of behind that as we go around. Of course, our first area has the most plumbing, so that's good, we jump, we dive right in, because the kitchen, we're reporting slab grade, the new kitchen's over here, there's a couple bathroom sets, so, hey, it's good, right? Yeah, just get to the heart of our plumbers. And then if you scroll through, you can just, this is kind of just taking a picture across the plane of the site, there were certainly, the gym footings here, so just a picture of that last Thursday, and then kind of across the northeast, you can see the foundation walls, these are poured, they might have already been poured, but they're poured now, the concrete walls there, they're basically forming companies continuing around to the northeast corner, where that main entrance is gonna be.
So for context, I mean, that's right where that ditch was, where that wall.
And now we have the storm pipe, and like I said, and it goes all the way across here, that whole, that whole plane, and you can also see some of the interior foundations getting completed, as we're kind of working our way around it, we didn't have there, to the northeast side. So kind of a summary of everything, you guys got any questions on that process so far?
We're about three-ish weeks before we have kids back in the building, and we're, looks like we've either pretty well ready for, to welcome back kids in those areas, is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, yeah, we have two weeks till teachers are coming in, so we're pushing really hard to be down to like, more like just test and balance, and like some of those system stuff versus actual work, you know, or, or just stuff in the mechanical rooms too, so yeah, we're looking in pretty good shape. With everything going on, there's a few pieces and parts that are supposed to come in, everything's confirmed, and hopefully they do, but we have a Plan A, Plan B, and nothing should, none of those are on the radar, like stopping school from starting anything, versus just working something, some detail with, with Jordan and Bill about, on a Saturday we'll come in and flip this, or, you know, do something like that, but hopefully we don't have to do that at all, but we'll just have to see as we continue to wrap up everything.
Any other questions from Mike? So we had said last meeting that the hope would be is, two weeks from tonight, we're in the step room, so we'll have to coordinate together, perhaps we either start that meeting or end that meeting, or they walk in the tour, so we'll coordinate that in the next two weeks and figure that out, but I think everything's on track, that that would be a good way to have that conference board meeting in the month of August. And then like you said, showtime that week, because we have a hundred and forty staff members showing up, so I'm confident it's gonna be ready to go.
It's exciting.
It is.
So are we.
Meeting ended, Mike. All right, thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, then we are, that was our only focal point, so we are then moving on to district business, to our big school operation plan starting our twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Sorry, I can't.
You're fine.
I was with her. Like I asked Mike to come to the front, Liz has a slide later, and Katie has many slides later, when we get to their portion, I'm gonna ask them to come a little closer to the computer as well, so our visitors online can pick up some of the audio, but just wanted to thank everyone, welcome you here, just really what we've tried to focus on is an intelligent approach, a thoughtful approach, utilizing obviously guidance from many government agencies, many local health organizations as well, that coupled with our lived experience, local information where things are at, with the focus on safety, and the biggest thing for us is trying to provide in-person structure, as many students as possible, safely. We also need to understand that the impact that quarantine or positive cases are gonna have on students that may not be wearing a mask, or students that are unvaccinated, so those are all considerations that have gone into this process, and we've seemingly been talking about this, we have been talking about this since February of twenty-twenty, as one of our visitors alluded to, the situation has changed recently, and that's, that's unfortunate, because it hasn't changed in a positive way, and that's something that we need to take into consideration, so, I wanna move on to the next slide, I just wanna show a quick video from, from University of Wisconsin-Madison, so if you could click on that, I've got this over the weekend, so this is hot off the presses.
My name is Shelby O'Connor, I'm a professor at UW Madison, I've listed my contact details on this first slide, if you wish to reach out to me after you listen to this presentation. For the past year, our team at UW has worked to improve our local response to COVID in Dane County and Wisconsin, some of you may actually remember me, because I worked with several of your school districts in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, to distribute Binax Now antigen tests to schools when they were not otherwise available. But today I'm here to share my thoughts on the Delta variant of SARS-CoV-2, and describe how its arrival in the community has changed the mitigation strategies that we and other experts think are necessary to prevent overwhelming our hospitals with cases of COVID-nineteen. So what makes the Delta variant different from other variants? Well, it is because it is so much more transmissible. I'm gonna give you a couple of data points to help explain what we know and why we think it is more transmissible. First, there is more virus sooner after infection, in China they tracked an outbreak between May twenty-first and June eighteenth, they, they tracked a hundred and sixty-seven cases, and all of them traced back to the first index case. They found that the time when contacts became PCR positive was about three to five days sooner for the twenty-twenty-one epidemic compared to the one from twenty-twenty, and they also found that people infected with Delta had more virus on the day they were positive, as shown on the right, that graph shows that, in orange, people who had the Delta variant had more virus, which is lower on the Y-axis, compared to those who were infected with the twenty-twenty virus, shown in blue, they had less virus closer to the top of the Y-axis. In addition, we know that there are mutations in the virus that improve its ability to infect cells, this is a very detailed piece of information, but when SARS-CoV-2 infects cells, shown on the left, there are two cutting events that need to happen, one of them happens in the spike protein at a site called the furin cleavage site. If you look at SARS-CoV-2, on the right, you see that it has a unique set of letters in the spike protein that make it different from MERS or the original SARS. This P-R-R-A-R sequence is very good for cutting. The Alpha and Delta variants of SARS-CoV-2 have slightly different letters at this site, Alpha has H-R-R-A-R, and Delta has R-R-R-A-R. This R-R-R-A-R sequence is really good for cutting by this particular enzyme, this makes the virus infect cells better, which leads to faster and higher amounts of virus replication in an individual. Now many of you are probably vaccinated, and that's great, that means your risk for infection is low, and I'm sure many of you know, however, that people can still get infected despite being fully vaccinated. How do we know this? Well, we are seeing both breakthrough cases and non-breakthrough cases rise in Dane County. You can see here the rate of infections for vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals since February of twenty-twenty-one, the rate of cases among vaccinated individuals has never been higher than it is right now, and it's rising, this is at the same time as Delta has become the prevalent virus in Dane County. People used to think that those who got infected despite vaccination would have a lower amount of virus, but this is also not true, in fact, the vaccinated individuals have just as much virus as unvaccinated individuals when they get tested. Here you can see, again, the relative amount of virus for those who were or were not fully vaccinated across eleven Wisconsin counties, on the Y-axis, less virus is near the top and more virus is near the bottom, you can see that the amount of virus detected in both groups is very similar. So should we be worried about kids getting sick with the Delta virus? Yes, and you can see examples of this in Florida and Texas, so in Florida, there's been a rapid rise in hospital admissions among kids zero to seventeen in just the last few weeks, even when Florida didn't see a spike last winter, that's not the case now, there's a huge spike, and you can see several headlines that comment on this issue. Same thing has occurred in Texas, they've had a rapid rise in hospitalizations, and it's been scaring many of the clinicians, in fact, this has been the case in the capital of Austin, and many of you may say, well, could this happen here? We're not Austin, Texas, but in fact, Travis County, where Austin, Texas is located, has fifty-eight percent of the population vaccinated, and Dane County has sixty-eight percent fully vaccinated, both counties have more than half the population fully vaccinated, so it's just as likely we could experience the same rise here in Dane County. Now while there are, of course, these immediate concerns to kids and, and rapid, rapid rises in hospitalizations, there are also concerns that kids are susceptible to long COVID, which we're just beginning to learn about now, the story actually came out in the New York Times yesterday, it describes how eleven to fifteen percent of kids are getting long COVID, and even about ten percent of kids simply have COVID symptoms for five weeks, and sometimes even twelve weeks. So my recommendation is that there should be universal masking in K to twelve schools to reduce disruption of school activities. On the left, you can see an illustration of how masking prevents transmission between individuals who, from one who might be infected to someone who's not infected, so masking is gonna reduce the likelihood for individuals to spread the virus, reduce the likelihood for school outbreaks, keep in-person learning operational, and keep in-person school services operational. Now, many of you I'm sure don't wanna wear masks forever, so I do believe there's an endgame, CDC actually has a quantitative measure of transmission in a community, so I think that when cases are low, as shown in blue or yellow, masking does not need to be as severe, but if you look at the country right now, most, most areas have high transmission, where there are between fifty and to more than a hundred new cases per hundred thousand individuals over the last seven days, and in Dane County, this is currently a hundred and ten. So I think that by considering how we wear, how and when we wear masks, flexing our mask wearing as levels of transmission change, we could hopefully avoid the devastating surges we're seeing in Texas and Florida, so that our kids here in Dane County can have a safe, productive, and fulfilling school year.
Like I said, I literally got that video over the weekend and I wanted to share it because I think the one thing that we try to pride ourselves in is taking information as it's presented to us and being thoughtful and using our decision-making framework to make the best decision possible. Mentioned before, I mean, the fundamental mitigation strategies that have been talked about by what I think in general we would consider legitimate institutions, like the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, DHS, Public Health, Madison, Dane County, UW Health and now the Department of Public Instruction, albeit not a medical board, clearly is an advisory board for education, and they talk about vaccination and about masking and including the most important strategies to mitigate the risk. So just wanted to share that with you guys as well because it's new information that I received, and if you want to go to the next slide. So it's just crucial for us to continue to be fluid and to think about this situation with an understanding that the goal is, is to have as many students enjoying in-person instruction as possible and for them to be doing that hopefully as safely as possible and in a way that's not going to force us into mask quarantines or students not test positive for COVID. That being said, the proposal that we have for masking at this time is to require for students and associated staff in grades pre-8 through 6th grade indoors, we strongly recommend for students and staff in grades 7 through 12 indoors, with the notion that if the situation changes and we have over a 5% number for positive cases or quarantine students at the 7, 12 level, we would shift to masking at that level as well. Optional use outdoors for students and staff district-wide, co-curricular activities, as of right now, we would say we'd be following the WIA guidelines, which are later in this document, and then that last point just goes back to the notion that we've tried to pride ourselves in being thoughtful and addressing the situation as it changes and right now it's obviously been changing for the last month roughly, and not in a great direction. Clearly, this would be something that would come back in future board meetings and be something that we would discuss, and if we hit that 5% threshold, that would be something where we notify the board, notify parents, families, students, and we were then shifting into masking at that level as well because we've gone above that 5% threshold, reason being is, number one, the goal is safety, number two, it's in-person instruction, and if we have 5% of our students out for COVID-related items, we generally have about 5 to 10% of our students out for other reasons, and now we're putting ourselves at 15% roughly of our student body that would be out on a given day, that becomes tough to operate if that's what we're working from day-to-day basis. Go ahead. Tendons procedures, these were linked in the last agenda as well, there have been no adjustments made to these procedures, basically what these items outlined is the fact that if you're not feeling well and you have certain symptoms, you should not come to school or you should not come to work. I think people have been a lot more vigilant in the last year as a result of COVID, but we certainly want to reinforce for students, families and our employees that the days of toughness coming to school, well, that was notable back in the day, that's not something that we're encouraging anymore because of the potential fallout. School testing procedures, Katie?
Yeah, I'm coming. So we are working DHS match test with a vendor as of 6 o'clock on Friday, I got the email that we were matched, we were paired with accelerated analytical and we're in the process of getting a meeting scheduled with them to be able to have testing, our plan is to test symptomatic individuals or I would think close contacts probably as well, with parental consent, we're working on a consent form with the status and that as well, so more to come on that, we hopefully get more from the company. Did you want to just go on?
No, go ahead, Katie, you're doing so well.
Quarantine, I think we pretty much talked about this last time, but vaccinated individuals who are close contacts will not have to quarantine unless they're symptomatic, otherwise we will utilize a seven-day quarantine with a negative test collected no earlier than day six, or a 10-day quarantine if people choose not to get tested, you can also utilize the alternative quarantine as long as the students are masked, close contacts don't have to quarantine from school, they do have to quarantine from outside of school activities and extracurricular activities, and as long as everybody is using masks consistently and correctly, so those elementary students in particular will be able to do this alternative quarantine.
Thank you, Katie, mentioned before that between masking adherence and then vaccinations are virtual primary items that have been outlined by many organizations regarding best mitigation strategies, so I mean, our stance as a district is certainly not going to force or do anything like that, that's not the business that we're in, but we encourage all those students and staff to be vaccinated, we will not exclude individuals who have not been vaccinated, and then in terms of our masking procedures, you can see that we outline procedures based on grade bands and things like that, and that do not be different based on who's vaccinated and who's not, that leads to many issues, first and foremost being enforcement and who's possibly going to keep track of that enforcement, that seems to be a losing proposition. Social distancing, no different once again, and this was two weeks ago, seating charts and things are being set up in classrooms, Bill is working with the principals on maintaining through for the social distancing whenever possible, and then students having assigned seats in classrooms, if we do have to contact trace, that makes that process a lot easier when we have the classroom setting. School bus and van procedures, once again, no updates here, this is a requirement that is binding for everyone, not just Wisconsin High School District, but other school districts as well, that all students and staff are required to wear a mask on school-sponsored transportation, this provision runs until at least September 13th, 2021, and then in terms of busing, if we had issues with a positive case in the bus, we would use the bus security footage to help with contact tracing in buses. Lunch procedures, same deal as you saw a couple of weeks ago, elementary schools kind of spreading out students into a larger space, obviously this is one where masking is not something that students are going to be doing, they will take their mask off during their lunchtime, so it'll just be similar to how things were done at the end of the school year, and then the same will go for the middle school, high school, providing more options for kids to try to spread them out, give them some pressure as well, using some outdoor spaces and then breaking up the middle school lunch periods as well. Cleaning procedures, this is one that I think has certainly evolved during the pandemic, it's still important to keep things clean, to have things like hand sanitizer around with the notion that everything needs to be wiped down, religiously throughout the day is something that I don't have, that anyone's really recommending anymore, in our discussions with Bill and the management staff, we will disinfect the classrooms, I think it'll be school day still, and if we have high-touch areas, those will be eliminated throughout the school day. So I guess before we move on to updates on the data, and we'll have this quick, a lot of it's a repeat, are there any questions that you have before moving to data?
Are they allowing lockers this year for kids?
We'll have lockers, we have enough lockers that we can space every other student.
What about regarding sports, like for, you know, games, are they allowed to use the locker room? Because I know last year it was like they had to go in like one or two people and then one or two people, so are they going to be allowed to go in the locker room together?
I would assume at this point the answer to that would be yes, I mean, that's not something that was covered in the WIA guidelines until 2020, but we have decided we were going to place on top of that at this point.
I do have a, I do have a bullet point question on one of those, but I'll get to that when we start talking about the rest of it, because it kind of goes together, so. I'll wait to get to that.
Katie, how do you do close contact tracing, especially like with the middle school, high school, with lunches and kind of free time and as bodies are moving?
I talk to the student, we talk to the teachers and stuff that are around them and utilize the cameras in the building to look through, maybe have them go through, going through and through.
All of the video footage of the day.
And has the definition changed because of being unmasked, is the timeframe smaller or not currently, nothing has changed?
So I remember when we very first talked about putting in all the cameras and somebody said, why do we need all of these? And we were like, trust me, we appreciate that.
Now it is.
Who would have thought it would be this? No one.
All right, go ahead, Katie.
So looking at the data, where we are at, Wisconsin currently is at a 14-day average case count of 933 cases, that has gone up quite a bit since the last time I talked to you guys, for some context too, because I thought it was interesting, I added in August 9th from a year ago, and we're at 838 cases, our positivity rate in Wisconsin is 7% right now, and a year ago we were at 6.8, so both of those numbers are going up from where they were two weeks ago. In Dane County, our 14-day average case count is 78.3, and a year ago it was 48.5, and then our 14-day average percent positive is 3.7, that's that number you want below 5, so Dane County, we're still looking pretty good, Wisconsin overall still technically needs, should we do any more testing, we're not doing enough testing in Wisconsin. I added this in because I just, this is what you keep seeing everywhere for the CDC levels, so the low, which is the blue, the moderate is the yellow, substantial is orange and red is high, most of the US is high right now, even in Wisconsin, we have a little bit of variable, but we don't have any areas that are low, a good chunk of where we are at substantial or high in Wisconsin and Wisconsin overall is considered high. Which I have here, what they go off of is the seven-day total cases per 100,000, so Jordan asked me on the third where we were at, so I added that in here because I thought this was really interesting, two weeks ago when I talked to you, we were in the yellow, we were a moderate transmission, on the third, we were in substantial transmission, and by today, we are well into high transmission. So Wisconsin overall is 131, you need to be below 100 to be out of the high, and then Dane County is 114.9, the video that we saw was at 110 over the weekend, we're now up to 114, and what they had said in the video was masks for orange and red, so that's where we're at right now. So what does that look at for the seven-day average case count per 100,000, the previous numbers, what they're using is totals, just because that gets really confusing, these seven days for 100,000, what the CDC goes off of is totals, I have been sharing the averages with you previously, because that's what some people have looked at, so that's what this one is, Wisconsin, we are up to 18.8, Dane County, we are at 14.3, we are seeing more cases in the Black Forest, Mason, Mini area right now, so the census areas is 15.9, and then the one that looks at just the Wisconsin big school districts, the people that live here, not just students, we are at 22.7 right now, we have a few more cases in the last few days. Vaccinations, Wisconsin, over 3 million people have started the series, I did add, I tried to separate it out a little bit now, instead of just the people present with the first dose, I also added percent eligible because some of that data is available now, so 52.7% of people in Wisconsin have at least gotten the first dose, and 63.6% of eligible people in Wisconsin, not including people under 12, have gotten at least one dose. In Dane County, we have 70.7% of people have gotten one dose and 82.4% of eligible people have gotten one dose, so good job Dane County. Our staff hasn't changed, again, that's going up with our staff from last year, they don't know what any new staff this year, their vaccination status is, I only know because I helped staff get vaccinated last year, so, and when I looked at the students, I didn't do it for whole population, I did only the eligible population, we have had more students get vaccinated, we were at 55% two weeks ago, we're up to 57.8 right now, still that number is lower than Wisconsin and Dane County, so ideally that would go up a little bit higher yet. And then the state has available that Wisconsin High School District community that includes everybody that lives in the area, 64.1% of the population has been vaccinated, but that doesn't break it down to eligible, it doesn't go that far, so.
Thank you, Katie.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. That 5% threshold we came up with, I'm not even sure if that was an arbitrary thing, but I was curious of your take on that threshold of, you know, it seemed low when we made it, but at the same time, if it's up to 35, 40 kids, and what cost was always, you know, already to spread out beyond that, so I don't know if you have a perspective on a threshold?
I mean, I think it's good to have a threshold in place, 5%. I mean, how many students do we usually have? Oh, okay, so that's 20, I mean, that's a decent amount of people that are potentially, that was either positive or quarantined because of close contact, like, there's a lot of people that potentially have either positive or close contacts, and I would be concerned about larger spread, so I think that's a good number to go off of.
Do you have a sense of Iowa, Sauk County's vaccination rates or?
I don't, but I can go look it up and let you know at the end, hey, I know, I have the websites up on my computer all the time, so I could look. I don't like data at all. I go off the top of my head, but I can look.
Any other questions for Katie?
So I do have a question because as you can see, I have all these nice papers in front of me, do you know, like, I kind of went on, and this is updated as of today, so have you been looking at like the percent of each age group? So, you know, we're sitting here talking about kindergarten to sixth graders, which is your, you know, five to 12-year-olds, and then your high school population, shouldn't we be focusing also on what that population of spreading is amongst those two different age groups versus as a whole? I mean, wouldn't it be like, you know, if we're trying to decide to mask the elementary kids, to not mask elementary kids, shouldn't we really figure out what is that percentage? Like, is it 2%, is it 20% of those cases that we're seeing of the Delta variant? Those are, those are kind of, that's what I'm struggling with because you, we've seen a lot of, a lot of language, a lot of articles that come out and said, you know, it's, yes, it's spreading among kids, it's not spreading as rapidly, it's not as severe, I'm just trying to get my hands around, okay, what are we talking about for percentages for those particular age groups?
I don't know if there are percentages that exist yet when it comes to the Delta variant, because that is spreading more easily than it was previously.
Because I think I've got the COVID-19 one, so I'm just curious because, you know, as we're trying to make decisions, it's kind of, it's hard when you don't have all of the data, so, you know, we don't want to go too light on it, but yet we don't want to go too heavy on it, you know, so that's why I'm just trying to wrap my head around all of these numbers and trying to figure out, you know, which way to go.
I think the best that we can look at right now is you look at those information from like Texas and from Florida, where you are seeing the increase in hospitalizations and cases amongst children, and you can see that it is spreading in those populations, we don't have exact percentages yet because it's so new, I could look and see if anything's out there, but I haven't seen it yet.
I mean, I can tell you that the hospitalizations are going up in children here, like, I personally know there were five kids under the age of eight that were admitted within our system at least over the weekend, so.
Yeah, I kind of have this hospitalization thing, and if you, the under eight is the blue, so.
All I was going to say is it's too soon, like what you're saying is, we don't know until time has passed, so the information I know, you won't know.
So it's hard for, it's hard for me to make a decision one way or another because I'm looking at the data that we have now.
Right, you have the error on safety, and then if you were wrong and you were over cautious, then you back, back off, so you be proactive and not reactive to a whole bunch of kids having COVID. All right, I probably wasn't supposed to talk, I've never been to a school meeting before, sorry, but.
But I think too, it's like the data doesn't exist because school has.
Because it hasn't happened yet.
So like you don't, the data doesn't exist because the board of students have it together in.
That is something that they're working on, is being, working with schools to collect some of that data so we can analyze it, I gave data at the end of the year and they're looking at us to do it again, so that we have it and we can have a better idea of what is happening, but we don't know yet because it's just too new with Delta, but we can see what's happening in other states, and we do see increase in children that are testing positive and that are being tested.
Well, and I also have a hard time thinking and comparing us to other states because... Well, and I also have a hard time thinking and comparing us to other states, because Dane County was what, the highest ranked county for vaccinations? So here, we were pushing, 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 pushing for vaccinations, and now they're telling us, well, that didn't really matter in some respects.
I mean, it mattered. The vaccine still helps. The vaccine's still keeping a majority of people from getting COVID, but it doesn't, no vaccine is a hundred percent. It's not gonna make it so you could never get it, but you are less likely to get severe disease and die. So you could still technically get it, and you could still spread it to others. But not everybody is, even that vaccinated is less likely. I think Dane County's numbers that they have out, it's like eight point seven percent, not percent, eight point seven times higher among unvaccinated people getting COVID than vaccinated people.
So is there, are we starting to see students coming back to campus yet? Is that where we're seeing some of these numbers? You know, because that's something I have to ask too.
In other states?
There are people coming in from other states, and now they're getting tested, and now they're...
Dane County's numbers, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if that has anything to do with...
Over fifty percent of the cases recently have been outside of Madison, so it's not the, it's not college students.
No, I don't think college, I think movement data is in it next week.
Yeah, I know some, some students actually come into town before then, so that's why I'm trying to figure out, okay, is this, is this like the pre-college, you know, are we getting this increase of like pre-college students that, you know, have now been asymptomatic, and now they're getting tested and they're positive? So that's why I was just trying to figure out.
But I mean, looking at this information, even if it were like Dane, our population tracks are way on par if not higher, and I don't believe that those students are moving into Black Earth or Mesa Minis to go to college either way. I mean, honestly, the biggest thing that I can say from my perspective, and I certainly understand the urine for data, I'd love to have it too, is the, when I mentioned the groups before, and I understand their skepticism on anything that comes from any organization at this point, but when we list off groups like the American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, the DHS, Public Health, PWO, Department of Public Instruction, that that information coupled with, what I believe we do all agree on, is that we want to have our kids in the building as much as possible and not having to bounce back and forth. Sounds, this is like a bad dream from last year, to bounce back and forth. And if we end up finding ourselves in a situation where even if it's only a handful of infections, but at the elementary level, when you're both not vaccinated, and now you become a close contact, well, it's an automatic call. At least at the secondary level, if you're vaccinated and you're not symptomatic, it's not an automatic call if you're a close contact. So that the notion that the domino just falls so fast, even with just a few positive cases, I guess to me, that realization of some, that's something I can visualize, and then the fact that I have, but I have no reason not to believe our hundreds and thousands of doctors that have given their life's work to this, that are telling us this is what we should do. I hope in October that the numbers come crashing down on the other side of this, and we can then take our practical approach to this and recommend something different. I really do. But for right now, I don't know how in my good conscience I could say that we should, we should make it optional district-wide despite everything that I've seen in front of me, I'm just being real.
Yeah, it's, you know, and that's the hard part, because you have some places saying that it's, yeah, masks, they help some, but you can still catch it. Or a lot of them, they say, they don't, they don't prevent it. So it's so hard to figure out, okay, so they tell everybody to get vaccinated, and, you know, those people have stepped up, gotten vaccinated, and now they're saying that, you know, now we don't have that choice. You know, we don't have that choice because we're, I mean, the high school levels can. But I'm, my point was, that was talking about the bullet point, was those children that are in sixth grade that are twelve and are going to be twelve. I have an issue with mandating masks for the sixth graders, because some of them are twelve, I guarantee it, if they are already vaccinated, some will be twelve, and if they get vaccinated, we're gonna segregate them from the population who has already been vaccinated, who don't have to wear masks.
Probably becomes though is the close contacts and the quarantines, and if that mask, universal mask mandate is not in place, then those rules for quarantine go up the window, and whether, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, because there is, I guarantee you, there's probably gonna be some parents that are gonna come back and say, my child is vaccinated, why do they have to wear a mask? That's the only reason why I bring this up, because I, that's the first thing I thought about.
If we can get that data, and we can answer the question statistically, what percentage of our sixth graders or twelve-years-old is up September first?
It's head, once they all register.
Right. So the other issue with doing that is our admin and our teachers, they don't know if he's twelve, they don't know if he's eleven. They don't know if they've been vaccinated, they don't know if they are going to be vaccinated. We are not able to ask them. We can't go around and say, oh, you're not vaccinated, we need to...
Right, but I also, and I said this at the last meeting, where's the responsibility? Where's, the parents should be talking to their children about responsibility, and that's where, you know, it's, all of the responsibility seems to fall on the school board, but when you, you have parents, they should also be responsible. You know, if you're sick, you need to tell me when you're sick. You don't, you can't go to school. Parents shouldn't go to work because they're feeling sick. If they turn twelve and they get vaccinated, then, you know, they're like, okay. It's just, I don't know, I mean, you have to, you have to, you have to put responsibility on somebody else as well. We can't, you know, we can't really take the brunt of the responsibility, and that's the also part of it where I'm having a time, a struggle with it.
So keep in mind that, sorry.
Just before we get to, I'll forget what I'm gonna talk about, but on the quarantine, when you said, we can't ask if they're vaccinated, but on the quarantine, you say that if they're a close contact and they're not vaccinated, how are you going to determine that if you can't technically ask them if they're...
We, we can ask, we just can't mandate they give us that information. So if they choose not to tell us, they will then get treated like they are unvaccinated.
I think the notion of that, getting a call from the school nurse of a close contact first, walking into class.
I just clarified.
That was question number one, has your child been vaccinated?
I think one of the things is like the question is why are we helping our game more than what, you know, we did, you know, long, long, thirty-two ago, is the Delta variant is not perfect data, but new data, at least observational data showing what it's doing. I mean, one of the studies I saw from Louisiana is they say the transmissibility is the same as ticket box. I haven't seen all of that data, but if that's true, you think about an unvaccinated room full of kids with no mask, and I remember ticket box parties when I was a kid and went back fifty pence. I don't think, you know, I don't have that.
Last meeting I shared that are not valid with you guys, that it's basically that number of how many people each person own infect, and originally COVID was about two point seven. They are estimating with the information they have so far that this Delta variant is six to eight. So that's higher than most things, it's not quite the level of measles, but it's up there, so.
I think my biggest goal is what Jordan stated, is I, my goal is to have kids in school for their mental health, for their education, for, for the school to function the way that we intend schools to function. And I just feel like this is the plague, at least as we see it right now, as the forecast is more COVID and not, you know, waning COVID, is this is what's gonna be the most likely to have that happen, and keep kids in school without yo-yoing, is my view. And I, I look at COVID like a big fire, masks aren't perfect, vaccines aren't perfect now, and they're less perfect than they were with, with Delta variant, but they are some protection from the worst things, and if COVID's a big fire, and masks and vaccines douse it, you know, we want as many people to be part of the volunteer fire department as can, I think. And then when the fire goes away, we can back off on those things. I guess that's my take, I'm sorry.
So when, if, I should say if, not when, we do get that five percent, what is it gonna take to be able to say, okay, we can take them back off again?
I would say dropping back below that.
Okay, that's why I was curious, because it's not clarified anywhere in here, so I was curious, is it just once we get below that five percent, we can take them off, or is it we get below it to a certain point, and then we have to wait X amount of weeks until, I'm just curious what that...
Yeah, like, when are we gonna look and see what that number is?
Is there a number that they, we have to drop to, because kids could fluctuate pretty quickly with that five percent, you know, because one case could go, okay, we're back below it, and then one more case, and now we're back above it? Are we gonna do it, you know, a certain amount of time?
I'm not gonna say this is gonna be a perfect, perfect operation, we're gonna be there because we haven't lived it yet. I mean, the easy thing would be to say is everyone's wearing them. Maybe that would eliminate all the thought from this process, so.
So, so if the cases are contained in, like, say it's Black Earth students, or it's Mesa students, so then we're saying that everybody in all buildings have to wear masks, or just that building?
So, I mean, the proposal is that the students who are K through six are gonna be wearing a mask, irregardless.
Right, but I'm just saying that if, I'm talking about this five percent. So if the five percent, it goes above five percent, but it's found that it's in that cohort of Black Earth Elementary, are we gonna require the high school kids to wear those? Okay, just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that we were kind of on the same page with that.
Five percent threshold is for the students that had impacts, it's the students in grade seven.
Okay, and that wasn't, and Mike and I were trying to figure out, like, okay, are we, are we talking about like everybody, or are we just talking about like if it's concentrated in, you know, one building or the other, or just, okay.
That cohort is given us.
Okay, perfect.
So, to go back to your comment, Angie, about, you know, it is apparent responsibility, we would love parents to have that responsibility. However, we can't assume every parent is going to follow what we think is gonna be accurate, because what we think isn't what they think. And that's evident by this fifty-seven point eight percent of eligible individuals within our high school. That forty percent has not been vaccinated, which is what we've told parents they should be. Not we, CDC, and all the other AAs and all that stuff. So I think that's where we have to really look at, is there's forty, forty-two point two percent out there that is in our high school that is not vaccinated. So in our best interest, do we want to make sure that they're safe? You know, yes, we're going to strongly encourage them, but, you know, we're trying to find a balance in everything. And so that's really where we have to look at.
And I totally, I totally understand that. I mean, my kids are vaccinated. They got vaccinated as soon as they could get vaccinated. So that's where I'm having a hard time being like, okay, me as a parent, you know, I did get my kids vaccinated, so, you know, I took responsibility and made sure that they were one step safer, and that's why I just have a hard time being like, okay, you know, if you're, if you're so against wearing masks, it's like, I don't know, it's, it's, yeah, it's a hard...
So I think my perspective is it can get so complex so fast, when you talk about your own personal views, parents' views on both ends of the spectrum, we've sure heard all of that. But in terms of simplicity, for me, this is a job of service, we're public servants, and of utmost importance is public safety. And it's similarly why when we were doing snow days, we didn't say, well, it's unsafe, but if you want to make the call to drive your kid in, go, go for it. No, no, you made the choice. It's not safe to stay, everybody stay home. And similarly, to echo that, the second of all is to provide public education. We've all been through hell, through virtual schooling and seeing, you know, the toll and the turmoil that takes. And so the masks is the single-handedly one thing that keeps kids in school and having a public education, but along with, you know, public safety, those two things are why we're here. And so it gets complex, but at the same time, it's pretty simple.
All right, are there any last specific questions, so we can just kind of keep moving on?
Well, I was just gonna say that, I mean, we have lots of, we do have one more board meeting that's scheduled, I don't know what the number they're gonna do, and we could do, but I'm just saying, we do have an opportunity there, or we do also reserve the right that if you wanted to call a special board meeting a couple days before, it makes me emergency decision, we could always do that, so just, I guess.
And at any time, you can hear that, throughout the school year. Yep, absolutely.
I suspect the numbers will probably just continue to go up, but who knows?
But I think what changes it is when the entire population has a chance to become vaccinated. It's, it is a whole different thing when you're talking about multi-generational families, and people that have been vaccinated that haven't, and we're still in that world of like not everybody has been the opportunity. So that may change things too, but you can't have data, data doesn't exist, and future doesn't, future, you know, and it's not gonna be overnight either. I mean, the fifteen, was it sixteen-year-olds, it was back in like May, and then even when the twelve-year-olds could do it, it was just a couple months ago, so I mean, the time has, it, it hasn't been that long. So it's not overnight that we're making it to sixty percent.
Have you heard, Katie, on the younger age, any updates on that or not?
No, I mean, nothing more, so hopefully before too long, but nothing official.
I think just one last question. Did we receive emails, phone calls from parents regarding their opinions, questions? I know we had gotten a couple, but just curious if we had gotten any more information from, from parents?
What was shared, what we received?
I was used to.
Well, I know a parent that emailed in that we did not see, that I got told specifically, I sent an email in, but I never saw anything on it. But I was just, wish we knew all of them that called, if there was a lot of them or not, or if it was just the very few handful that we saw.
But I'm wondering why that, I mean, for the handful you have on this end, you have a handful on this end, so at one point you're...
Yeah, I'm curious if it was both ways, I really do, I would like to know if it was both ways.
But we want to know that.
Three members of the public here advocating for full masks, so...
I would just like to know how many have done both ways, that way it's an educated decision for us, so we know what the community...
Well, you want to just know that the majority is...
No, but you, to get an idea of what the community really does want.
We need to know the opinions from...
And if they have any specific input on that.
So I do know, you know, we got something, I apologize if it was just centrally to me, I will go back and look through my spam even, and make sure that I followed up with everybody. You know, we always encourage everybody to come on to the line, we always encourage them to come here. If they really feel strongly about something, we really encourage you to come here, share your words. That's the best place that you're gonna be able to share your information on the board.
I joined the meeting a little bit late this evening, and for that I apologize, but I kind of lost the opportunity to, to speak up and say that my family in particular, we believe that it should be an individual choice, and we're very much against having students across, you know, we've looked at research, and I think we live in a time where we're very blessed to be able to research on our own and to look at different studies and come up with our own conclusions, and to make those decisions for our particular communities. Because they have families that are different, they have individuals that are different, and who knows that best are the parents themselves. And so we believe that going with masks is...
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's move on.
Yep, so just, this is same as it was, obviously, two weeks ago. One thing I want to throw out there is with Andy moving on to become principal at Cambridge, which will be later on the consent agenda, congratulations, Andy. He did great things, but I think we all understand that overall one-hour commute one way is not other criteria, with twelve, fourteen-hour days, you have a young family, three years was probably exemplary service on his behalf. So thank you, Andy. I just wanted to share though quickly, Liz and I have obviously talked about the situation, the position was posted already last week Friday, we have over a dozen applicants already. Administration jobs do garner quite a bit of interest these days. So it's posted, we hope to interview next week. In the meantime, kind of temporary operations, Jamie Vandenbergh, who was Andy's assistant, and the schedules, the day-to-day workers, things like that, Liz and I will take care of affairs items regarding COVID, or staff items, or once we start having events here in the next week, if we have to cancel something, we'll make those decisions in the interim until we get somebody hired up. Just wanted to address that, so people are aware of what that line is for the time being. Talk before about utilizing WIA guidelines, I did see a email on Friday from Stephanie Howser, who's the new director of the WIA, saying they continue to work with their medical advisory teams as well, and that she didn't want to anticipate one way or another, they'll have updated guidance, but she certainly did not close the door to that. So just wanted people to be aware that this is what the WIA is recommending as of now, and if that guidance changes, well, then some people have to revisit if we're just gonna adopt their guidance or choose to do something different at the school district.
Liz?
So we have a small cohort of students and families that wish to remain online.
So we have a small cohort of students and families that wish to remain online. Um, so we are going to pilot Mandar and then online. So the big goal for this is that we want to meet students and families' needs for a quality online education while maintaining a personal connection to the school. Um, I have five students, um, that are going to try a virtual option at the middle high school level. So we are going to use Wisconsin Virtual School, which is out of Tallamack, Wisconsin, and it's, was a project or a product of CISA nine. And, um, they've been doing that for 25 years. We've been providing online instruction. In fact, many of the virtual schools and virtual charter schools in the state of Wisconsin use Wisconsin Virtual School as their course supply. So we are just going to contact directly with them. Um, so we, they have 25 years' experience. Uh, they use Wisconsin licensed teachers, and we will have a Wisconsin Heights educational coach that provides support for those kids if they are online. Um, so they will be able to select if they're fully online for all their classes, or if they're going to take academic four online only and then access our electives on campus. They commit by semester. Um, and at the end of the first semester, so the last five days of the first semester, first five days of the second semester, they have a window if they want to switch to in full-time in-person, or if they want to do some hybrid. So we're going to start small and we're going to refine the model as we go through this year. And we will, you know, anticipate that there will be future
About how many students do you have?
I have five right now.
So are the parents happy with this option?
I believe you're perfect. I'm hoping it all tomorrow.
We're waiting for our actions.
Yes.
Ah.
I've heard they're thrilled.
I've heard you. Um, it's going to be very, I mean, I, in my opinion, it's very similar to what a lot of virtual charter schools taught them to do.
Would this be hard for them to switch at semester with what they're being taught online and then trying to transition back into in-person or?
Um, it might be a little bit more difficult with middle school, because we are not on semester system middle school, we go by quarter. Um, but it shouldn't be that big of a transition.
The high school.
So our students at the high school level are prepped on the semester.
Okay.
So, um, they would flip right on that semester time. So there wouldn't be, shouldn't be as much of a transition issue.
It's nice that they have that option.
Yep.
So we're excited. We think it will be good. Well, you know, it's kind of.
This is a positive for the district as well. Just like retaining students and FTEs, this allows them to retain extension in the district. They can still participate in cool curriculums because we're providing the programming. So I mean, I, I see that's a work.
So when you say the cool curriculum or our, or our electives, right? They can take our electives here? So how does that work? Are they like, just do the mornings then? Or how, or do they kind of have to go back and forth? Because the electives will be different times a day.
Right. So we would probably say, okay, do you want a morning or an afternoon or when you want to go like this? We'll try to chunk them.
Okay, try and get them one or the other and not have them.
Like, so they're not all over.
Yeah, because the electives are different times.
I know, they're all over the place. So hard.
Yeah. So we would try to group them. Um, it's kind of like, well, it's a lot, it's very similar to like college scheduling, you know, uh, in that you try to get your classes together. So I mean, if they're not coming back before, but, um, so we would try to do the same thing. So they, they may need to be a little more flexible with what electives they want to take. But then, but kids on campus have to be sometimes flexible.
Yeah.
When they're going to get their lessons. So it's all part of it, I think. And if, if we learn nothing from last year, it's like, you get to make these choices. You have to be flexible. And we're going to kind of turn a lot of different places. Um, but we want to support them and still have them be our kids.
Right. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be exciting to see kind of how it all plays out. Yeah, and then for them to still have, you know, instead of the electives and, you know, that sort of thing is, is good.
If they want, if they are interested in extra curriculums, they still are in both of them.
Yeah, that's good too.
Participate.
Is there the possibility for this virtual school to offer summer school for credit to, just to the masses even, if somebody wants to?
They off, they have limited offerings in summer, but they do have summer options.
Anything else for Liz? I just want to give a shout out to Liz. She put together a lot of work to get this organized. Uh, really organized the information for the rest of the administrative team, so we could all wrap our heads around this. Um, so thank you.
Good job, Liz.
Uh, just updates on, on dates. Obviously, August 23rd, two weeks from today is the first day of all staff in-service. Also, our, our second board meeting in the month of August, first day of school, uh, three weeks from Wednesday. Uh, and September 13th will be that first board meeting, um, of the month and sort of providing updates on how things have gotten started, uh, district-wide. Just to re-inforce our principles of, sorry. Oh, why?
No, wait, that's a bug. That's a bug.
It doesn't look like it was a bug.
No, it's okay. Don't say that.
Um, just to reinforce our principles of, of trying to safely get students in, to provide as much in-person instruction we possibly can, understanding that, um, you know, when I hear you talk, Angie, some of the things that I hear in my mind are, are similar feelings that I have about just kind of being exhausted. I think all of us feel that in a certain way. I'm sure medical professionals feel more exhausted than the rest of us. But even as parents, as community members, educators, whatever we do, I think all of us are, we are exhausted with this and I completely understand that. I guess, however, exhaustion isn't a, isn't an excuse for inaction or a lack of still trying to do the best that we can to be as safe and intelligent as we can, understanding that we are walking a very interesting line, rope, I don't know what you want to call it. Um, so I just, I, I hope we can keep those guiding principles in mind, continue to work together and communicate with each other and with our community and staff, uh, and navigate this together. Because unfortunately, despite the fact that we are exhausted, I don't think it's going to be over, uh, in the immediate future, uh, but hopefully, yes. Uh, just like there were brighter days in late June and early July, that's not that far off again. But as I said at the last meeting, it leaves me feeling much better when I have a chance to sit back and reflect on this. If you compare where we're sitting right now and where we were sitting one year ago, we are in a much better place, even though it doesn't always feel like that. So hopefully, uh, even when we're frustrated, we can remember that. The good news is we're going to welcome 700 new kids with open arms into our buildings on September 1st, and we are going to try to do it as safely as we possibly can and keep it there as long as we can and hopefully the entire year. So, that's all I got.
Okay. All right. So we would like to proceed with an action item at the beginning of the school year as we did last year. Um, I just want to quickly highlight what the admin is recommending for the masking specifically. Um, first, just to say busing is not an option. We have to follow the CDC and federal recommendations, which means everybody has to be masked until at least September 13th at this point. Afterwards, we'll figure that out. Um, we are going to be maintaining three feet of distancing with assigned seats. PK through sixth grade are asked to be masked for all children, younger stepping. Uh, 712 will be strongly recommended. Those that are unvaccinated to be wearing the masks. Outdoor is optional. We will assess at five percent above as well as then once we get below for either positive or quarantine kids, and we will also watch for new friends. We will follow the WIAA guidelines for each sport practice games. With all of that said, do I have a motion? And please be specific
And then just to clarify, obviously, tomorrow on the to-do list, uh, depending on the results of the meeting tonight, um, the to-do list would be to send correspondence to parents district-wide at all lengths, uh, whatever provisions are or are not approved by the board tonight. So those procedures will go up to parents in writing. Tomorrow will be a Skyward Messenger.
So either looking for a motion to approve as the admin has presented, approving as, you know, if you want to make a, um, a change, amendment.
I, I'm going to proceed as presented, if, if, if you want to.
No, that's good. All right. So we have a first. Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you, Mary Beth. Any last comments, thoughts, quick thoughts?
One question I had was about, I should have asked that before, sorry, about, um, the middle school and the sixth grade as far as being separated and how that's a issue, if they're separated, if they're not, or what parents should expect with that when sixth grades mask?
Primarily with only sixth graders most of the day.
The one hallway. Yeah.
The hallways are where they may mix. And the, even with the lunch periods, we typically have sixth graders go outside first for 15 minutes and then, um, then seventh grade for the eat, and then these look. So if they don't even eat lunch with kids or something.
That's what I'm interested in.
Asking things like that. Great question. Who would not call upon us as a close contact?
Correct. Right. All right. I do have a first and a second. Um, not seen any other comments. I will leave the both then. James?
Yes.
Mary Beth? Who has? Matt?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Angie?
No. Mike? And I'll say yes.
So we will pass. Um, so that will be, thank you all. I know this is a really hard topic, so I just appreciate everybody's comments and thoughts. It's just, it's a lot to deal with. There's never a right answer for everyone. Thank you. All right. Let's move on. Student issues. Um, so district business, seven one and seven two, I would take a motion to combine both of them.
Oh.
Thank you both. Any thoughts, questions? Karen, um, James?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Um, Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Um, well, do these individually as they are very specific. Do I have a motion to, to direct legal counsel to prepare a counter offer to the offer to purchase dated July 28th, 2021, and to authorize the district administrator to sign the counter offer on behalf of the district's board of education? I'll make a motion.
So.
Thank you, Angie.
That's a lot of verbiage in there.
Straight, straight from the attorney.
I'm like, I am reading.
Holy cow, that is a lot of verbiage in there.
Was that Matt, Matt, the second?
Yes. So any other thoughts or questions on this? I know we talked, what are the last?
Glad to see it kind of moving along.
All is, all is moving.
Yes. All right. James?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Bart?
I abstained.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Thank you all. All right. Another one. Do I have a motion, um, to approve the notices to prospective purchasers and proposal forms and to direct the district administrator to disseminate the notices in the usual places?
I'll second.
James and Angie.
All right.
Shake things up a little bit.
That's right. Any questions on these? I would the usual places.
You started with an "I" when it was terrible and I.
All right. Just making sure he's doing his job over here.
Any other thoughts or questions? I think we've also talked about this one for a while. All right. It is so exciting.
Super exciting.
James, Mary Beth? Matt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I will say yes as well.
Just real quick, I'll follow Jenna tomorrow. Let her know that where things went tonight. Turn that, we'll get those out as soon as they're ready to go.
That's awesome. Perfect.
I would, um, take a motion to approve nine one through nine four. It's so interesting.
Oh, second.
Matt, no, he was.
I was sighing because of.
Angie, leave him.
But that's okay. It's super exciting, but.
Yes. Thank you, Angie. Thank you, Angie. And he's done a phenomenal job. Um, you know, we're certainly going to miss him. Um.
I've heard from so many people saying, so bummed, so proud of them. Everybody.
A lot of those students.
Students are even more, yeah.
Yeah, such a people guy and.
He connected with all the kids very well.
Definitely.
It's one of those positions, I truly believe that, you know, we build them up and send them on their way. So I think it's a kudos to us.
Right. We're getting them ready for that next, that next step, you know, that future endeavor.
Yes. Yes, exactly. All right. Anything else on those? Not hearing any. James?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. Future meeting dates. So remember next week, we are back at the middle school, high school, we'll be in the staff room.
Two weeks.
Or two weeks, yes.
I was going to say, I was like, what? What are we doing next week?
I will be here next week. I will not be even around next week. I was going international waters.
My only question is, is there a possibility that we'll hold meetings for interviews for athletic director?
I would, I must have something that, why wrong?
Well, we were involved.
We did involve the candies.
So we can figure out what we want to do with that.
Okay. Well, the only reason I was bringing this up is because we do have to hold a special meeting. You could also, if we have new numbers or something, if you want to pitch out to the board or mission board, whatever, including that.
For the, I would say for the, um, for the notion of approving a hire and perhaps there would be a rep on committee or something, but the notion of approving hire, we can pull this off by August 23rd and we have, uh, and we pulled off an extraordinary task.
Can I ask one quick question? Um, is, so, um, you know, Andy was the assistant principal and the athletic director. Are we combining those into one again, or are we doing separate?
So it's, it's posted as a combined.
It's posted as a combined. Okay.
And that's the job description.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we were going to, you know, like, split it or keep it the same as what it always says.
Great question. Yeah, but for now it's together. Um, if we need to get creative, depending on candidates or someone else, we can always be creative. Liz can do both.
I kind of like my statement.
All right. Well, then we will.
You didn't even try to smile. She was so.
All right. We will then adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen eighty-one, parent one, and an E, delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. We will call a roll.
Angie Wolf?
Yes.
Mark Schatz?
Yeah.
Matt Crowe?
Yes.
Mary Beth Schall?
Yes.
James Cartman?
Yes.
Cindy Byd?
Here, yes.
No, I'm not here. Really not.
Thank you, guys.
I am really not here.
I'll take our block and put them in the garbage.
I got it as a box.
Well, you know, I got you if I want to.